Good afternoon. Well, it's still morning. Good morning. This is Wednesday, March 1 at 11:10 a.m. We welcome you to Clark County Council for our council time and its agenda today. We begin with public comment, which is on agenda items only. I see that our hearing room has been vacated. So, staff, let me ask you, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of February 22?
Motion to approve the minutes, Madam Chair.
Second. Any objections, changes, edits? Anything at all? Hearing none, they stand approved as drafted. Thank you all so much. Rules of procedure.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, based on prior discussions with council and also some feedback that I'm getting individually, I wanted to get clear direction on a couple of items that have been brought up to potentially change in rules of procedure. And the goal is, is that next week, I can draft the new language based on today, and I'll be available next week. And I believe Leslie will be done with her part as well, so we can continue the discussion. So, if you're okay, I did send this to staff today. This was the last iteration that you saw in an email, and I just wanted to, if we need to look at the language. So, one of the items is with regards to public testimony. And this is, I know we had originally discussed public testimony. Do you need me to tell you the... Yeah, let me take a look here. There's a lot, there should be a lot of yellow, if that helps. I don't have it up on my screen. Hold on. Yeah, keep going. Keep going. It's like a whole page of yellow. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, right here. So, we had updated this to include certain items with regards to a total of three minutes that people could speak at Tuesday councils meetings. And so, we added total after the last one. Can you guys see that okay? Because, can you blow it up? I can't, I can't see it either.
I can see it. I don't know if everyone can.
So, this was, so the yellow was just me updating, just as a quick reminder, based on the new OPMA laws where we have to allow public testimony anytime council may be taking final action, which is why we also have this on council time agenda. The council did, the majority of the council did say, yes, we want three minutes. And yes, we want only a total of three minutes, so that people can't say, well, I have five other people, so I guess 15 more minutes on their, on their testimony. So, question for council, as I'm hearing either through the public discussions or with oneones of me. Do you wish to increase the three minutes, decrease the three minutes? Or, and another option that I also heard was, decrease the number of times in which public testimony, general public testimony would be received. And this is in reference of, like, I think City of Vancouver does it only quarterly now. And so, all other testimonies based on agenda items only.
I think everybody knows where I stand on this. I'm a fan of public input, and, but I'm okay with that. I think three minute total is acceptable. The only thing I did want to question was that, in a different reference to a total of three minutes, there was afterwards also the language in there that the council, I know that it says here that the council can approve, like, an add, you know, an add-on, but what about an increase to those three minutes? I think there was one other instance where this was referenced, where it did allow us to do that.
Kristen, if you could scroll down just a little bit more. I think it's on the last, the last yellow on here, which, it does provide flexibility for council, if the majority of the council wants to provide additional time for an individual or actually put constraints and reduce the number of, or the number of minutes, or reduce the number, or set a specified number of people who can testify. Now, go down just a little bit more.
Is there a specific reason why the two are different from each other? But, this is Wednesday's time, Wednesday's council meeting.
Because that, there's no general public comment.
Okay.
Only on agenda items for council time.
Okay.
But there, if you keep going down a little bit, Kristen, I do believe, okay, right there. The council may increase or decrease the three minutes allotted time and/or total amount of time, so like, to one hour for public testimony of all persons speaking on a particular topic upon approval of the majority of the council.
I would support that language being on the other one as well. I don't, I think this is gonna be a very rare occasion, but I...
Well, and I don't think this ties only to Tuesday meetings. This could be on a public testimony.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
So, like yesterday, we didn't have general public comment, but we had a lot of individuals here who wanted to speak on that topic.
So, I want to come into, and I'm gonna use Glenn's exact words. I think you know I'm a fan of public input. However, I think what Vancouver's doing is something we need to consider at some point, maybe now. You know, they, we are not a platform, nor should we be a platform. And there's a big public discussion out in the meta world for false information, or badgering staff, or calling them criminals. And, you know, we're not Trivalkar Square. We have business to conduct, and things that are on the agenda, I want to hear from the public on their public input, because it is very valuable. But what Vancouver is doing, just be, and I haven't, I understand you used to attend them, I haven't attended them. They were getting out of control every, every session with random public comment on things that had nothing to do with the business of the council at that meeting. So, we should consider taking that step as well, and not allowing public comment on issues that aren't on the agenda in a more limited way. I don't know if quarterly is the answer. Maybe it is. Or maybe once a month. I don't know. But it's worthy of discussion. And I would also, I want flexibility for the chair. I think this is a function where the chair comes into her own, or his own, if it switches off. And, and we need flexibility in it. So, for instance, we had, we've had instances where this has popped up. It's been rare, but then we've decided how to handle it. Fireworks. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we had hundreds and hundreds of emails on both sides of the issue. So, we randomly selected, and I can't remember the number, but we read 10 into the record on four, 10 into the record against, and then limited public comment, I think, to an hour. We had, this is pretty rare still, but an open forum where we separately had listening sessions. One was even in confidence. You know, it wasn't publicly broadcast. We did that on a particular issue, and I thought that was really valuable and helpful, and had its time and place. So, we need flexibility. But the bottom line is, these are business meetings. You know, if you want to have your own hope, open houses, and hear from your district, please do. And in fact, I had shared that one consultant, I think you may have connected, that was willing to help set up open houses for individual counselors in districts. And I assume that was at no cost to the county. But, so, these, these public meetings are not, are not just for a public venting on any topic that may be popular with individuals at the time, whether it involves the UN or fluoride, or dislike for our director of health, or county manager, or us. You know, this is, this is a business meeting, first and foremost. So, I mean, I'm okay with what we've got here. I think it gives us flexibility, but I don't want to open it up more, or have a free-for-all for more. And we saw some flexibility from time to time, and even with this new council since January, where people would come up in pairs, and one would start the three minutes and read, not quite get through it, but then have it, another three minutes start with the person next to them. I'm okay with that, as long as the chair is, and she doesn't slam the gavel down. But, but we do need rules. They're for a very specific purpose, and that is, first and foremost, so we can conduct an orderly meeting.
I didn't do that yesterday with the pastors, for example. That was, didn't seem like the right thing to do. They had a message for us. I, there's just one thing on this paragraph VI, six. In parentheses, parentheses, there's, for example, up to one hour. Aye, aye, that scares me. If we could say, like, up to 20 minutes.
Yep.
Something smaller, that's a little more contained. I'd feel better. Thank you. And then, let's go to the section that Gary was addressing, where it talks about people talking on the agenda are off agenda, I'm sorry, on Tuesday.
So, it's a general private comment. So, if you could scroll up, please. And it's pretty much the same language on these. It's just that one calls out agenda items only on the three minutes, and we have a total of three minutes. If you can keep going up.
Before we move to something different, can I just make a comment on the most recent I think there'll be lots of unintended consequences with that. The first one would be, who do you select to speak? And the rest get cut off if it exceeds 20 minutes?
Here's prerogative.
Pardon?
Here's prerogative with what Sue said.
Well, it went by the list. Whoever were the first to sign up, first come, first served. How it was handled, that's how most...
All right. So, then, the second unintended consequence that I would see is, I don't, I, I just don't agree with, I think an hour is reasonable.
Oh, mine no.
I do. And it'll, just kind of thinking of the, this situation that could arise, is we have packed chambers, there's 20 minutes, one of the counselor makes a, you know, recommends increasing the time, and now you're at a situation where you're good guy, bad guy. You know, and, and I don't want to create that situation where some of us look like we're wanting to hear from people and others don't. I don't think that's fair to, if that makes sense. I just see that as an unintended consequence.
Could we still, as a, and this is a question, I've forgotten the detail here, could we still increase it to two hours if we wanted?
The 20-minute reference was an example. It's not the parameter. It's just like, for example, we could, we can do it that way. Because the other thing...
From three, correct?
Right. Yeah, right.
Yeah, and so, in a perfect world, and we've had this happen, we usually know when we're gonna have this issue. And then, we discuss it, not from the dais, but ahead of time, and, and decide on how we're gonna proceed. And so, keeping three minutes, I think that's the norm. But maybe if this topic comes up, and we say, oh, my gosh, we're gonna get flooded with a wrestling team again. Let's, let's consider only two minutes.
Wrestling team.
Yeah, because, you know, we usually know there are times we don't. But how we, I know how the chair is like, okay, how many do we have signed up? You know, and I see that as of yesterday, too. How many do we have signed up? 15? Okay. Then, then we move on. If it was 100, I would assume the chair may have entertained looking at other options for council's consideration.
Okay, I guess...
Yesterday was borderline. I think you had said then 13 or 14, right? And that, that's a pretty high number, really, but...
So, what would we do in that instance? I mean, that's kind of what I'm trying to find out.
Council decides.
Council as a whole?
Yes.
At the dais?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Normally, we, I mean, yes, we get caught off guard. But we can, we normally know ahead of time.
Okay.
By the level of emails that we get. But, so I would put a nuance to this. So, we're sitting here, you ask the question, how many are signed up? And the answer comes back, 20. What would prevent us from saying, okay, we need to have an executive session, going into the room behind us, and then discussing it in private, and then coming out, and, and then the chair could just announce what the rule would be?
I don't know if that is executive session topic. What I think would probably happen is that somebody would, the chair maybe say, okay, we've got 20. Counselor, I recommend that we amend this and accept 10 of the 20, and listen to 10. And then encourage the other 10 to submit something in writing, so that their testimony is still read.
Just right. Comments? Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry. I just wanted to address that one question, Councilor Mevage. Thank you for that. That's true, that wouldn't be executive session. I think, my recollection, when the council has done this, at least when I've been in this position, is that during, if we knew ahead of time, I think it was during the council time, in an open, public meeting, that there was discussion about how to handle a particular meeting where we knew there was gonna be 100-plus people, and there was discussion amongst the council, and then a majority of the council decided in a public meeting, you know, what that public comment would look like at that upcoming meeting. So, that's generally how it would occur.
Many times, I'll give you possibilities and language that you could use, whether it's reducing from three to two, reducing the number of total, reading the 10 for, 10 against, or the time. So, I'll look at the menu, and I've got those still, so I, if we get there, that will help.
That's would be very helpful, again.
And I'm okay with all of that. I just don't see the value to changing 20 minutes on there, because it seems to me like it's just gonna be bringing this issue up.
Because people have minds that might start to think in terms of, oh, I don't want three minutes, I want an hour. That frightens me when I think about trying to control the length of a meeting. And particularly, when there's a lot of people involved, it can get so cumbersome. And they're so repetitive after, you know, person number 10, or whatever.
Yeah, it is repetitive, but it's real for that one individual.
It's three minutes of real, in my book. I'm...
I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. I think, you know, the hearings that we've had recently, I think, were handled really well. And there were a number of people who spoke, like, yesterday, and some who didn't sign up, but were inspired to tell their story. So, I think that was great for us to allow all of that. And, you know, I know, I've been in those rooms where there's so many people, and sometimes it goes down to one minute. So, it'll be a judgment call, but we have to be able to make that judgment call. The thing that I've wondered about is when sometimes people have had two opportunities to make comments, and they're generally the same comments, when we have both open, public comment, and then comment on the agenda item. So, I don't know if it makes sense to combine those. I think if there's just, and I think it's good to have an opportunity for the public to speak to us directly at, at every, well, not when we're doing work sessions or council time, but when we have our public meetings, that I, I think we need to have that opportunity. And it will be, sometimes surprise us, and it'll take more time than we may want, but I think that's just part of interacting with the public.
So, I'm good with what we've got, with the one change that chair made. And then, you know, flexibility is a good thing, and we rely on our chair to exercise it. And, you know, I just, in the back of our minds, though, if it does get to be a problem, I would like us to consider the same path that Vancouver's taken, on not providing open, random public comment every single public hearing, but limit that. Maybe increase our outreach on open houses, or having these other special listening sessions, or some other mechanism. Or individually, the counselors meet and set it up through the neighborhood association, or otherwise, they have their own district focus, open comment.
Sue, you mentioned something, I think, very important about the duplicity of comments for, of somebody in open session and on the agenda. We shouldn't have that. So, maybe it'd be easiest if that is addressed in the rules.
Yeah, and we'll look at that, because we do have the agenda outlined in the rules, and so, we can look at doing that. But before we go there, I want to make sure this, Councilor Mevage, you're not recommending now changing open public comment for every Tuesday, but we may change some of it based on...
Yeah, well, I don't hear any support on that issue right now. So, and it hasn't been, you know, a tremendous challenge.
Okay. And then, there's no suggestion change for the time. Is that correct? Saying, yes, yes.
The three-minute time?
Yes. Okay. And then, the 20 minutes, does anybody else have heartburn with changing it to 20 minutes?
I just, I, I, we'll try, and see what happens. I just don't see it bringing anything productive. I think we're just gonna end up having, have this discussion every time, and then it's gonna end up being that we do allow further time, so...
You know, I never have.
What's that?
I never have. Yeah, you can have more than three minutes.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not speaking about three minutes. I'm talking about the three minutes of everybody combined. I mean, that's what we are discussing, right? Is the 20 minutes? Is that not what we're discussing?
Depending on, I mean, it would be three minutes per person, or it could be two minutes with 10 people for the 20 minutes. The 20 minutes is not set in stone, it's an example of a parameter. What we did with fireworks, because that was, as Councilor Mevage said, very, we had a lot of feedback. We got hundreds of emails. What staff did is, we tallied all 100, and said, so we presented in two ways. We read 10 for, 10 against, we did a half-hour, I think, public testimony, also online testimony, and then we said, and the percentage, we received 48% against it, 52% for. So, we actually shared all the data. So, and you know, and all of that stuff gets sent to council, so you, the public is still reaching out and communicating in a different manner. But the example of 20 minutes is just an example. It, there is a menu of options in which council can decide on how you want to receive, how much you want to receive, how long you want to receive that information.
Okay, so, I apologize, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but, so currently we are up to an hour?
There's no standard.
There's no specified standard?
It's an example only.
Okay.
It's just an example. I can put in all examples on there. I can say, you know, it could be 20 minutes, it could be an hour, it could be 10 people, it could be 20 people.
Yeah, I don't, I just, I guess I don't understand what changing that word in there makes a difference to you, but, but it doesn't seem to have any effect, so let's go ahead and move on.
Yeah, it's simply an example, and honestly, I don't know how much the public watches this. We just want to make sure that the way you're governing meetings, that you have flexibility to address it. And I'll always share the different options that you have.
Yes, and I support that flexibility.
Are we gonna move on past this area to a different topic?
Let's, if we can go to the agenda item, so that we can talk about public comment and agenda items really quick, is that okay?
Sure. And then, I'd like to come back to the old M, which is now seven, little seven.
Okay. So, Kristen, it's number seven on page six. Okay, right there. So, if you scroll down just a little bit more, this is just the agenda outlined for Tuesday's meeting. And so, you see, you have the special recognition, the pledge, invocation, bid awards, public testimony on consent and separate business, and the tab that...
Question. If we have had something precede consent, like a, I don't know what it would be.
Proclamation?
Yeah, yeah. Do we ever have work sessions? What day is this?
This is the Tuesday meetings.
Yeah, so whatever we have sometimes precede consent.
Yeah, it would only be if there's a special recognition, the pledge of allegiance, invocation, bid awards. I don't even see here. I would say special recognition would be your proclamation. So, those are the only items that would happen before consent.
So, they can't address anything but those items here. Is that correct?
As of now, yes.
Wow. I wasn't actually, well, I remembered what this said, actually, but I wasn't sure that I liked it. And so, one day, somebody, there was something that preceded on our agenda.
It was a proclamation.
Well, maybe. But there was also something that was substantive that we had talked about. And anyway, I let the person talk about it, and I was bad by doing that, because I knew that it wasn't listed here.
Yeah, and it might be when you convene, like, as the library board, or whatever the name is, where you, sometimes the council opens up as a different identified board prior to their, the normal meeting.
Hmm. Well, at any rate, if it is just these items, that's clear, done.
Okay. So, then the second, so here's where we have public testimony, which is item number five on the agenda, and then we have open public comment as item number eight. Is council wanting to combine the two at the beginning? You have to do it at the beginning, the beginning, obviously, for consent and separate business comment.
I would be in favor of that.
Just so we're, just so we're clear, just combining the two into one particular, like, the same time?
Yes. So, it would be public, general public comment and public testimony on consent and separate business items. Total three minutes.
I think that probably makes it easier for the public. So, I don't see any reason why not to.
I like the idea of making it easier for the public. One of the, just pointing to the, kind of the pop-up meeting we had the other day that was on the agenda. The downside to having comment ahead of time, so we had a whole crowd, heartwarming, got me upset, and then we moved off of that topic, they all left. Then we started a whole nother topic, and then, and then started making comments about, luckily, some people came back, at least the leadership from the, from the, from the program came back. But, you know, then we, we get to the point where we're actually addressing the issue, and the room's empty, they're all gone. That's the only, timing, timing issue that was a recent example of how it doesn't really work well.
Right. I felt that that was awkward, too. I guess one thing that might have happened if we just changed the order of the, the topics that we were dealing with, so that the people were here who testified could hear our deliberations.
And what would that look like here? They were here for separate business, so we would take that.
Yeah, and then council can certainly motion to amend the agenda to look at that item and change the order of the separate business items.
I think that's a good solution.
That is. What follows open public comment? I've forgotten.
That would be if there's a hearing, public hearing.
Yeah, I think we were...
I know, I know, we're gonna say that, too. Let's go. I want to get through this to make sure I have clear direction. Do we want to move open public comment to the same line as comment on separate business and consent items? Do you want to do both of that, so therefore later in the agenda, there, there's not an open public comment?
I would say, let's try it.
Okay.
Where it gets complicated, too, is when we have multiple public hearings at the very end, and we have additional public comments as part of those hearings. I mean, I don't see any solution to avoiding that.
Well, what I'd like to accomplish is to connect their testimony, if it's on separate business or anything else, with our deliberation on that topic.
That might be difficult to arrange in advance. I think that's one of those dynamic things that, you know, we might just, if, if, I don't think it'll come up very often. Yesterday, it would have been good to change the order, but I think that'll be something to figure out on the spot.
Counsel, if I may, I just also wanted to point out, I think the discussion is very good here, but just keeping in mind that this is still kind of a working draft, and certainly, the council will be, you know, deliberating, making decisions. So, it could be a situation where we have some kind of draft language to work with, and then you can discuss later on, you know, the concreteness of it.
That's what we're doing today, and I'll bring back, I'll bring back draft language next week.
Is this one different from what you presented? Is this one different from what you presented to us last time?
Nope.
Or is it the same as the one that we got from you last time? Okay.
We just have more experience.
Okay, yeah, so I guess I, there was a lot of things that I was circling, stuff like that, but I'm just gonna table that, because you may have changed that already, and just wait until we get a new draft. Am I understanding that correctly?
Not necessarily, because, like I said, I've got a list of what individual counselors have shared that I wanna make sure I'm getting.
Okay.
The majority of the support, so I know what I'm drafting, so that I'm not updating things that maybe.
All right, so we'll just go through this whole thing, and then if there's other things we see.
We can, yeah, you can certainly bring it up.
Good.
Okay, so do I have three that wanna combine the open public comment and the other one?
I'll support trying it.
And I think Gary does.
Okay, okay. And then the other one on this order that has been brought up is the public hearings, and does council wanna move public hearings before consent and separate business?
I, I think leave the public hearings where they are, and each one, you know, will have its own public hearing, and people wouldn't be commenting on any of the public hearing topics under the open public or consent agenda.
And we tell them not to.
And we tell them not to.
I would support moving it to the beginning, and the reason being, I think that the public hearings are the most important one that the public are supposed to be involved with. And when they show up at the meeting, and we have consent agenda, and it goes long, and then people, they don't know when they have to be here. You know, they have to show up at the beginning, but they have to sit through the entire function of the first part of the meeting before we get to the public hearing. So I think it, personally, I would like to see it at the beginning, so that the public hearing happens right away. They're here, they can testify, the public hearing takes place, and then we move on with other business. But that's my thought.
So where, where would you put it, in the, if we could look at the whole list?
Basically, right after, right after, like, wasn't there, like, invocation on there? Basically, the first item that we address. Yeah, basically, number four would become public hearing.
So that'd be before public, open public comment and comment on the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, see, so those folks would have to wait around for sometimes hours.
Generally speaking, there, there is more participation at a public hearing than consent.
But not necessarily with open public comment?
That is true.
It's just, I know each of us sits on other boards and hearings, dozens of them. I've never seen consent pushed to the end of the calendar. I mean, it's always dealt with approval of the minutes, and it's just kind of random ministerial work that's, I mean, obviously, if we get substantive issues in the consent agenda that probably should have been dealt with separately, that's, you know, that's just something we have to be careful with. But I'm not sure I'd be supportive of differing from every other norm, board hearings and approving minutes and consent items right up front.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with that. How about separating consent from separate business? I, I'm not accustomed to seeing the terminology "separate business" in multiple settings, you know, like this. I mean, separate business is usually the agenda, period.
I don't know what you're recommending, Chair.
Neither do I.
Okay.
But I think there is a potential for putting public testimony on consent at the beginning, and then separating it from separate business and open public comment. And then we would take action on consent immediately after public testimony on it, which typically, there is very little, if any. Just a thought to get through consent. That is usually almost perfunctory in a meeting. You know, and we make it combined with, with other things that elongates it a bit, just a thought.
Is that clear?
It is to me. If council wants, I can draft up a couple different options, and we can talk about it more next week.
Sounds good.
Am I hearing at least a consensus move public hearing at the beginning?
Are you talking about the open public comment or the public here? The public hearings, generally, there's a staff report, I mean, they're lengthy chunks of time, and I think if we can, you know, if the consent agenda, and we can get, deal with the things that don't take much time upfront in most cases, that's, that's the better way to do it. I think if you're coming for a public hearing, you generally don't know exactly when it's gonna start. That's just kind of the nature of it.
Yeah, that's the part I don't like. But I don't think I have consensus, so I think we can just move on.
Okay, so I will draft another version of this that. I'll, yeah, I'll draft and then try to split out, I'll do two different versions, one splitting out consent and separate business and public comment, but I'll, I'll bring a couple different ideas for you guys to look at next week. The next one that I had, that there was a question regarding if the chair and vice chair were both absent, how, who decides, or how's it determined who would chair that meeting? I know historically, I always would say Counselor Olson, you have the most, you've been here the longest, and then council would actually make that decision publicly. It hasn't happened very much, I think once or twice in years. But there was a discussion on, or option or suggestion regarding seniority and how it's defined with regards to chairing meetings, roll call votes, and then, like I said, defining could be different than just like when somebody started as counsel.
How would it be different possibly?
Than?
Than when one started at counsel?
The only thing I could think of is a percentage of, gosh, I don't remember, the population in which you represent.
Oh, which is a little different, yeah.
Yeah, it's not tied to hire date.
Yeah. So I, I'm very comfortable with you saying, because you know who would have had the greatest seniority of whichever three are left. Counsel, would you agree to have, if Gary and I are gone, I guess it would be Sue, to having, you offici, not officiate, whatever you call it, chair the meeting? Yeah.
I'm game.
And if you're gone, too, we don't have a quorum, anyway.
That is correct. Okay, is there any other input on that one, or do you want that solidified in writing in the rules of procedure? I mean, it hasn't happened very much, but.
It's probably a good idea. I've forgotten what it says, if anything, now.
There's nothing in there.
Nothing, yeah, I think it's good to have that in there.
Am I on? Yeah, I do find the interesting, or the topic of the roll call vote, interesting, and what order we do that. I mean, typically, we do it just by district order, but does anybody see any value to changing that?
No. It's never been an issue. I, I don't.
What, what is the issue for you? I mean, what, you don't like?
He's always number one.
Yeah, I'm always number one, and the way that they do do it.
You have an, you, you have an outgoing personality, I would think you would wanna be number one.
Yeah, I won't comment on that. No, the, the way that the city does it, though, is that they do their roll call in order of seniority.
Oh, that's the reason not to do it that way, then, right? We need to be by order of district.
All right.
There you go.
By order of district, so it stays.
We'll be unique.
But the chair goes last, is that correct, or is?
I don't know, or am I three?
Based on, yeah, prior to having five districts, the, yes, the chair has always gone last. But before, the chair wasn't a district, didn't have a district either.
That's what it was.
I, I don't see any reason to change it, and I think, you know, we have our deliberations. I think everybody has an opportunity to speak, and so when it comes to the roll call, it, I feel like people are probably solid in how they're gonna vote. So, we've already had the opportunity to influence each other, if that's a consideration.
That was all that I had, is there other items?
Yes, I'd like to go back to what had been item, oh, it's up there right now, item M, and now is little seven. I've mentioned this to a couple of you, and you saw it happen once. There was a person who came forward and started to talk to us about things that were in violation of this litany of things that must not be shared in a negative way about staff, and she did begin to share them in a negative way about our revered county manager. And so she was shut off. And it happened very quickly and easily because she was online. And the next time that it happens, it might be that the person is not online, but is in person. And then it will not happen as easily, you know? It's not as easy when someone is standing before you, and you tell them that they are now finished with their, with their remarks, and we hope they come back at a later time and not be defamatory to county staff or elected officials. So, what we've got at the, would you like to mention what is at the back of the hall now as far as that statement that you have? And then also where they sign in if you, or say that they want to speak, if you can show that?
Yes, we added, we printed out directly from the rules of procedure the language that states, this language, actually. And it's printed out in the back where everyone signs up. So, the intent is when folks sign up for public comment, they see what is allowed, what's not allowed. And then I also added, let me pull it up on the web. It made the text a little small, but on, oh, and then I have this zoomed in for you. On the public comment instructions, the same language is at the bottom. And shows what's allowed, what's not.
And our reason with Kristin for preparing what's at the back of the room and what's here is so that each and every time a person signs up for testimony, they may have seen this. Otherwise, if this is read one time at a meeting, chances are that by the time they give their defamatory remarks several meetings later, this would, what they heard read would have been out of sight, out of mind, you know? So that's the reason for having it at the back of the room and here. It's just one more way of trying to make sure that they, that we avoid that problem, rather than have it happen and then have to deal with it.
So, real quick, I'm not sure what people see up here, but can we, like, I mean, we wanna share this information for sure, like, when we're asking for public comment, 'cause it shows them how to do it, but perhaps, like, at the beginning of the meeting or something, when we don't have any presentations up, we can just have that showing, that specific text that talks about acceptable behavior.
So it does get pulled up when the chair is asking for public comment, and so staff's getting ready to call them or whatever, that's on there the entire time. Before that, we have the agenda up.
Okay, yeah. Understood. Just, I can just, just looking at this, I mean, we do the typical human thing, is we scan, like, the few most things that stick out the most, and we don't generally look at the whole entire thing. So I was just thinking of, like, clipping that particular language somehow, I don't know.
And this could be read once a month, or once a quarter, or once a year, or something like that, if you feel that that kind of notification to the public is necessary, too. Even though when people are being uncivil and profane to staff, which has happened, I think it's only fair to them that they have advance warning, that that's not okay here, and they're gonna get cut off. So, if you have any thoughts beyond, you know, what we're trying to do here, holler, and we'll do them.
I guess I would say that if we have it on the screen for everybody that's online, and we have it back there, to me, that is, although maybe not everybody saw it, that is acceptable notification. And so I don't think there's any reason why you cannot just end the conversation, like you need to, and say it was properly notified in the building, you know?
And, and this language is on the agenda, when, when somebody's looking at the agenda to see how to call in or testify, is it, it's not?
It is for today. It is, yes, so, and I looked earlier on our agenda, if you click on the submit public comment.
How to?
It actually, it's a two-pager, it's the three, at least when I looked this morning. The, no, on the agenda part, keep going down.
We added this, frankly, last night.
Now, it's on the link? No, 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 you're fine.
Right, so if it's not included there, it could be included there, 'cause I know when I've testified, I've looked at this to know how to do it.
What a great member of the public. Seriously, I do that, too, yeah. How does this work? Yeah, that's good.
I think we're doing enough for warning, or notice, rather. I think most people in society know when they cross the line. The problem is, you know, no matter how many times you read it, or plaster it up, you're gonna, you're only gonna run into a problem when the person is gonna disregard all of that. And so, all the notice really is sufficient for legal reasons, eventually. I mean, if you're sitting here and someone refuses to relinquish after you've cut them off, we have security available, and I will tell you, as, when I was here alone, or acting as chair in New Year's past, I mean, I, it was very rare, but you basically have to be very clear. Your time is up, you're disrupting this meeting, step back, you're trespassing. You know, those are things you should do from, from the dais, if it ever occurs. I mean, I would tell you, as a judge, it was very challenging, but I had a bailiff and armed security in the courtroom, and sometime, you know, my orders would be informed by arrest, often, And sometime, you know, my orders would be informed by arrest often, or people, you know, you're remanded. We don't have that option here. And I will just tell you, the reason why that podium is there now, we had an instance where a disgruntled member of the public who's been here frequently, walk over here and start glaring at us. And my, my experience, it's called mad dogging. And for a criminal street gang member, that would usually precede a shooting or stabbing. Or in a prison or jail setting would mean someone's about to get shinned. So I was really concerned about our staff there, because this person was really completely out of line. Temple Lentz eventually got up and escorted them out. Evidently, they knew each other. But that's why that we put the podium there, to make sure that we, to protect staff. You know, from Amber over and from Kristin over, you know, we, we sometimes have to have a boundary when people are just, you know, exhibiting conduct that is threatening. And by the way, I was saying, call, call security, call security, call security. And security came after the person was long gone.
Well, the benefit of what you just described as far as the language for the chair or whoever is presiding relative to the person and saying, you are now overtime, you are now going to be, uh, cut off, your discussion is over, whatever you say, that's all verbal cues to our security officer, too. And so he, we've talked about this, so he understands what is in our rules and procedures. And he would just know that they're being invoked. And that's necessary. So that's really good to do, not just for the, the person who is going outabouts, but for him as well.
Well, and counsel, if I may, that is part of what I've been working on for the rules of procedure, because there are certain things that have to occur pursuant to the law in terms of, you know, what can be done to either, you know, inform someone that they're being a deception and how they're removed, that sort of thing. So that information will be included in what is provided next week, so we can talk about it.
Okay, you know, I've got some of that, and I forgot about that and didn't use it in the past. But that would be important for, I think, maybe everybody up here to have, and for sure, the chair and vice chair.
Certainly, what we can, like I said, I've been working on the rules of procedure, so that language will be in there. But I can certainly help come up with kind of a script as far as, you know, what to do at this point and then so-
At the time, you do need a script.
Yes. Happy to do that.
Yeah.
I have just one thing to add to this. There was an event at the City of Vancouver City Council just recently, too, where an individual approached the dais. And so since then, they have put some physical barriers, basically, at the speaker podium to the sides to kind of say, look, this is the area for the public and this is the area for staff and for council. I, you know, I don't like to do measures like that, because I don't want, I don't like the image of feeling that we're not the people themselves. But at the same time, security is something to be considered. And, you know, there was, there were some nervous people during that event, so, from my understanding.
Regularly.
Just got to put a little closer, yeah, there you go.
Now it's on.
Yeah, that was, and I know the chair mentioned, publicly, they would sit here before. So after that incident, we talked about different options that we could do. And we started with the podium in the first row, so that people would only walk up to there. And I think overall, it's been okay. I know that they have written documents, they're still going to give those to staff.
So what I was saying before my mic was turned on, I'm happy with what we've got now. And we've had pretty good luck and behavior and dialogue and openness. And again, I haven't been to the Vancouver City Council meeting, so I don't know exactly what challenges they've had and what topics and-
I'll send you a link.
That would be good to under, for us to understand, yeah. And how they handled it sounds really good.
The other thing, too, these doors are locked, correct?
No, that's how we come in.
That's how you come in?
Yes. We, we've never had an issue with public coming in from those doors.
Okay.
Is there any, is there any other items in the-
So I did, before we move on, because it's been something that seems so clear and simple to me and hasn't made any headway. And I thought that we had three votes, whatever, and the last I heard was legal was looking at it. And I was afraid today, we have four people here, I'm like, oh, boy, we're going to have two to two votes and then disagree. And I'm thinking, uh, okay. And the only remedy to that is, and I got to tell you, it became an issue before. Let's take this off the agenda, because we only have three councillors or we only have four councillors, because, and we don't want to stalemate. So what happened to the two to two and two to one carve out from Robert's rules that we were discussing?
Counselor Mevige, I think Kathleen mentioned this before, but all of the things, I've been working, all of that, and that's coming to the council next week. So that's all being worked on. I haven't forgotten about it. But yes, I do have that on the list, and it will be before you next week. So essentially, where you see where it says Leslie is working on it in these rules of procedure, that's, that's what's being worked on. And I believe what you've described, Counselor Mevige, is included on that list.
I have a few items to bring up on it. So my page numbers are different from the presentation. On page five, which is the page that starts with one, general provisions. I'm curious, and maybe it's not listed here and it's in a different spot, but how do we, so, item number three and then paragraph E, if a council vacancy occurs, and it talks about that, how, and it says how we choose one, but how are, you know, how are applicants accepted? Or is it similar to what we did with the planning commission, to where, you know, we kind of informally vote on who we want to interview? How does that, how does that work? How are the interviewees accepted, I guess?
Are we looking at D here? E? B?
Yeah.
Counselor Young, if I may, I think maybe you're reading this to say that the council votes to reappoint a new councillor. I don't see that, that's not what this provision says. This provision talks about the remaining members serving on the boards and commissions for the councillor who's-
Oh, yeah, that's correct. Yep, I see that now.
To replace a councillor is a completely different process.
Okay, so that process is defined in here later on?
No, that's, that's defined, I don't believe it's in the rules of procedure.
Are we talking about a vacancy on the, on, yeah, so that, well, that was just a new charter amendment last election. We have, I mean, that's-
Right, it is, right, it is defined in the charter how that happens and in connection with state law. So this particular procedure only has to do with-
Okay, I'll, I'll look that up then. I'm just curious how that, that works.
Yes.
Okay, then I was interested, the next page on where it comes to C, and the very, very last thing, I was curious about this, and I had a short discussion with-
I don't see a C on mine.
Oh, sorry, it's the next, next page. Two pages following. And at the very end, where it says that the agenda is emailed on request at least four calendar days before the meeting, do we have any requests for that? Do we have a, like a list for people that are requesting the agenda and?
If anybody was requesting an agenda, we would refer them to the website where the agenda is. I don't, Rebecca, are we, I don't think we've gotten any, yeah.
Okay, so should we remove the language that it will be emailed?
But if somebody emailed asking for the agenda, we're going to email them back. That's what it is. So I don't, there's not a problem with it staying in there.
Okay, because I do know at the city, you can join a list to where an agenda is automatically emailed to each week, which is helpful.
I don't think we have that for here. I think community planning and some of their processes, they have maintained their own list of constituents, but we don't have that for this. So I just want to make sure, does anybody want that changed or deleted out of here, this particular language? Okay.
And I think that's all that I had. Yeah, that's all.
And in that event, are we through with rules of procedure?
As long as counsel, yeah. As long as there's no other suggestions today, I'll make some edits based on the discussion and we'll include that next week. Thank you.
We are not progressing quickly on the council time agenda. So that's why I asked and thought I'd pull us back if we may to new business. And I believe we have none, so councillor reports.
Chair, I have a couple of reports, just briefly.
Okay.
I attended the Workforce Southwest Washington meeting. And just to report, they, we reviewed a grant application and they're awarding two career pathways, a million dollars for each of three years to work with disconnected youth on career counseling and removing barriers to productive employment. And it's very collaborative and including working with the juvenile justice. So that's a very positive thing. And then there's an upcoming meeting that I won't be able to attend on Tuesday, March 14th. I don't believe I have an alternate, but it's a Zoom meeting, four to six, March 14th, if anyone wants to drop in and listen to the good work that Workforce Southwest Washington is doing.
Since Michelle's not here, I volunteer her. Isn't that how it's supposed to work?
Okay, you can mull that over. And then the Public Health Advisory Council met, there's a vacancy for a youth member. Applications are open till the end of March, so if anyone has anyone they'd like to steer that direction, that'd be great. And then the bulk of the meeting was taken up with racial equity update and discussion. They're considering equity decision tool that will, in their decision making, they can better address health disparities. They've really integrated it into their work and are developing metrics. So it was, it was a great thing to participate in.
Counselor Marshall, were those funds of $1 million, I believe they totaled $3 million, you said? Would, are those federal monies?
It's, it's federal dollars. I believe most of their funds are federal dollars, federal and state. I've just been to two meetings, so I'm still learning. They, I don't believe, and I asked, they don't believe, receive any funds from the county, but they do, they're just highly collaborative in working with a number of departments. And I think in looking forward to like the jobs that we want to create in Clark County, the work that they do is really important, so that we're nurturing a workforce locally that can get those jobs. So it's not just other people moving in. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but, but we want to make sure that folks who live here have those opportunities.
Anything from Impact?
Yes, we had, we did meet with Impact last week. And essentially, what we did is kind of an overview. You know, there's lots of new members, so they kind of laid out what we plan to work on this year and, and kind of a policy perspective, how we're going to do it. And to me, the most fascinating thing in this was we talked about how equity is going to be such an important part in how we determine our policy. Well, I'm not a voting member, so I can't determine that policy. But so the interesting part was when they were speaking about equity, they had a picture, which I assume was of a freeway. I don't know whether it was local or not, but of a freeway before it had been constructed. And it showed this big stripe in the middle of residential housing where all the houses had been bulldozed, and it was dirt, no freeway yet. But we had that discussion about equity in that particular photo. And then we talked about traffic congestion mitigation tolling, which was interesting to me, because you're, you're going to experience diversion, and you're going to experience diversion in those very same neighborhoods that surround the freeways. And so to me, it's, it's an interesting issue to look out from a, from an equity perspective, because I don't see it, I see it doing a, the similar things as mistakes that we'd made in the past in that system. So I thought that was interesting, but we essentially just talked about what we're going to be working through this year.
Thank you. Other reports from councillors?
So I have a lot of on my agenda, but I also hope to have lunch before I have my next meeting at one. So I'm going to just summarize three of them with this. I'm hoping to keep positive action in relations with our manager. And so I'm looking forward to discussing off this dais, the gin development, the ADU issue, and also with Amber, the security and lack of it around this building and the lack of services I see for the bodies curled up on the pavement almost every day that I come here. More needs to be done. When I talk to security, they have absolutely nothing to do with it, even if it's to call 311 and say, geez, there may be a dead guy laying outside our door. How about someone checking on him? We need to do more. What I want to focus on, I had a very brief follow-on meeting with Amber just during our break. I sat on the WASC broadband subcommittee, if you will, for that organization. And we had a meeting yesterday, and it was a great meeting. It was with Marv Vascony, who's the state broadband director, and Michael Gathney, who you know was the lead for Washington State University Extension. I think we have a way ahead, and I think all the councillors need to know that. I mean, there's money available to nurture the process. The ports are still working with us. There are some big issues, there's some structural issues. And the first and foremost that the state's dealing with, and now the port, Port of Canis, Washougal, is there's a process for competitors, if you will, to challenge the MAPS. You know, it's a proprietary issue because of, and open access remains an issue. But, but the challenge on the MAPS, hey, that's, that's not an underserved area, we're servicing it. You know, those challenges are holding up grants, and grants are going to be delayed. But there's about $55,000 in individual grants that we could grab hold on that would help us through the process. And I think Amber's going to take this on. We have someone to fill out the paperwork. I was told it, you know, there's basically web-based workbook pages that need to be filled out for WSU. They're trying to make it as simple as possible to put in for these grants. And I heard comment from Sue, and just so you know the basic structure, there's two basic portions of this planning process. Phase one is the infrastructure. Phase two, equity. And I'm, it's not really phased, it's at the same time. You have infrastructure and the equity portion of it. Digital equity means being underserved areas, but also access to areas where service is there. One thing I didn't get a chance to say to you, Amber, is that, you know, right now, there's, you know, we missed out completely on all the first grants. Lincoln- Lincoln County has done a great job. And they're taking a different path, and obviously it's a very different county than what we've got. They're owning through this process, all of the infrastructure. So they are becoming their own dark fibre, just as Richfield's doing with their port. Anyway, there's a, the process is in place. We had a very productive meeting. I would just tell you that every other county is experiencing the same issues. You know, the challenge of the maps, how do we fill out the paperwork? Who does it? I would also say that Lincoln, besides getting, being very successful at getting grants, they have built staff. So they have now broadband staff that's funded through these state and federal monies to initiate and monitor this program. So a lot's happening. I think we're still well positioned. And from my brief conversation with Amber, I think the staff has got it in hand. Very quickly too, we had a meeting yesterday with, and I've been trying to get this meeting for years. We, quick background on Lackamas Lake. We had an interlocutory agreement we were going to have with the city of Canis and have all the stakeholders that you would normally include in a lake management plan sitting around the table to discuss the watershed, point source of pollution, bacteria and nutrient loading. DNR's got a role, ecology's got a role, Kanae Clean Water's got a role. We've got about 80% of that watershed that feeds Lackamas Lake. And of course, Canis, those three lakes, Fallen Leaf, Round and Lackamas, they own it. That fell apart. The city withdrew from that agreement. It never went forward. So this was actually the very first meeting we had yesterday with all those relevant parties. Ecology really took a lead and they had four participants, Ken Later was there as well, and Clean Water. We had a very good showing and Amber from the county. And we had some really good discussion on how to proceed. So I'm hoping for progress and some follow-on meetings. One of the takeaways that I did follow up on, one of the things that the mayor said from Canis as to the reason why they've taken no remedial steps. They've invested all their money in further studies. And it had to do with oxygenating this lake. There's a, you know, they have a 50-foot depth in some places. It's a fairly deep lake until they drain it. But it's got an oxygen problem that they've had for 40 years. Everyone knows it. It's mutrifying. But they've, they have avoided doing anything for oxygenating it because the mayor was under the belief that that would cause more problems. So I've reached out to the consultant that's working on Lake Vancouver and one that actually bid on the RFP for Canis on the issue of nano bubbles and oxygenation. Because I think it's a complete misunderstanding of what oxygenation can do. And the focus is on short-term impacts, removing the algae blooms, at least making them later in the year and shorter duration. Right now, Lackamas Lake gets them very early on, even before the recreational time period. And then have been persisting throughout nearly the entire summer, which jeopardizes animals as well as children and adults. It's basically poisonous water and people ignore the signs that warn them to stay out of the water, don't let it touch you. So anyway, we had a really good meeting with what I consider all the stakeholders. DNR wasn't there and they should have been, and probably the state parks and recs should have been. Because they've been very active on the north shore of Lackamas Lake over the years and grants. Anyway, that was, I'm happy that we finally got that meeting scheduled and I look forward to the next one.
Great. Work session requests. Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, Kathleen.
Yes, so Community Planning is asking for a one-hour work session. This is to provide an update on this program and get direction from council. The council did approve this work program and a consultant that was hired in September of 2021. And then there was a work session also held with council previously in March of 2022. So this is just to provide an update on that plan and to get council's feedback.
Yes, has that consultant been working since September 2021?
I would assume so. I would have to go back also and look because there, there was an update and overview of the potential program in March of 2022. So all I, what I can do is I can find that online and send the council a link to that.
Kathleen, I can answer that in a little more detail if you like. So we, we actually have materials that we prepared for fall. We were going to do a work session in November. And the consultant really hasn't been doing anything with this, with the materials since, since we stalled it out in November. The reason we put up, pushed the, pushed the pause button was so that we could get before the new councillors, because the work session will set up a recommendation that we have. And we'd like, we wanted to make sure we got input from the new council on how you would like us to move forward, so.
Great, well, I have a thumbs up for having the session, that's for sure.
Yeah, I look forward to this. This is super, like I love this neighborhood, it's my thing. So I'm really looking forward to this discussion, appreciate it.
Ken, thank you for speaking up, although your voice scared me when you, when you did speak up and I jumped. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. No, don't apologize, thank you for doing that. Any questions for Ken? Okay. We'll move on to policy issues then.
Yes, so I did provide a link. What I did is I took Lindsay's list and updated where I knew information. So I just want to quickly go over these so that council is aware on what's going on. The Heritage Farm Business Plan, I need to get a little bit more information on this. I just got initial feedback yesterday that there's a tentative work section that will happen in the next few months or requested. The Hatwick Trail, I see I have a typo because I forgot the D. The board, the DNR board did approve the Intertrust Exchange in January. And the county is waiting for the deed package from DNR. And they're reaching out again to try to get that. Vancouver Lake, that was, the consultants are continuing to work. They did meet, I believe, last week, sent over a link to all of their minutes meetings and stuff. And I'll send out to council if you're interested in watching it or seeing any of those. The safe park location, I'm meeting with Michael Torres with the city regarding the cost safe park on March 8th. The pros and cons, draft has been completed by Vanessa and Michael. The county council, like during your last discussion, maybe visiting sites. I am recommending that we don't use the Fairground site due to ongoing events as well as a contract with the Amphitheatre. So there, there's a lot of hurdles there. I do have the list of sites that were identified by the county. It was in the December 13th Echo Meeting Minutes. And I can forward that to council if you would like to see where those were. Echo Meeting, the next one is on March 14th. Staff is actually working on, and thank you councillor Mavagie for forwarding this website. And the website simply is just going to have a link to the minutes, to the original document and to the meetings. And that, because all the meetings are on CBTV. I don't have a lot of information on the countywide affordable tax. And I don't know, I think this may have come from the, an Echo decision and with the city of Vancouver's Prop 3. And if this is something that you're wanting to, are you waiting for more information like on safe parks or funding or anything like that? Is this something that council's wanting further discussion on? Councillor Mavagie, do you know if they were talking about the plan at Echo?
I had, I don't know if they originated with me on this councillor or not, but I had raised the issue to explore, to see what it would produce or give us options as far as revenue streams. And I think Mark Gasway did a good job of that when he presented it to us. I'm kind of in a position that I'm tilting at so many windmills right now. We are also, this also came up before the special election because we were waiting to see how it would come out for the city. And it came out very positively, obviously. And they have been doing great work. And the one fact that really sticks out is they've basically, for every $1 of revenue from the tax, they've matched it eight times over with state and federal grants. I mean, that's, that's hard to ignore how successful that is and what they've done with the Vancouver Housing Authority and other programs they've had. I think it's a valuable thing for us to look at and think about. Obviously, it's a weighty decision even to put it on a ballot, to have the public vote on it. And the unfairness is that is, you know, especially with that, with, well, that last special election was a good example. You have precious few people voted. And so basically, a vast minority of the people just put a tax on the, on the majority. And so there's some fundamental unfairness in that. So it's a weighty decision for us, even if it's a good viable option. So right now, I don't think I need any additional information. I think I just need to have conversations with the other councillors from time to time and see if there's a will to pursue it.
Okay, so go ahead councillor Marshall.
I would be interested in exploring this more. I, I don't, I feel like there's a huge need that I don't fully understand. And if we were, it seems to me it would, there's a need and it may make sense. And I'd like to just understand more details of what the money could go toward, how much of the need it could meet if we were to move forward with this. But I'm, I'm wide open for exploring this.
Yeah, I would support looking into it as well. And I do agree with Gary on the issue. I, I fundamentally disagree with putting things on the ballot knowing that very few people are going to participate. I think it's, if it is something that is valuable to the county, we should be able to prove that to the people and get their support on it. So I am definitely interested in, in looking forward or looking into this and seeing how, you know, how we can, how we can do that. And, you know, probably looking and, you know, partnering and communicating with the city to see how they've done some things and that such. But I, I would love to get the ball rolling in, on looking into this for sure.
So other than me finding information that's already been gathered, is there, do you want me to start there and send it to the council and then see if there's more information needed? Or is there three people that are like, yes, we need to like raise this to a higher priority level so that we can get something on the ballot next year?
So obviously Vancouver's ballot measure probably outlines pretty well what uses, because they had one for 10 years and now they're just extending it really. When Vanessa, Vanessa Gaston did a presentation for Echo, but it was, it was fairly generic. You know, obviously, there's a lot of need, here's how we can use it. So maybe if we could, one, get, capture the information that the city already has. And that might just come from the voter pamphlet, that may be enough. But maybe focus, Michael and Vanessa, on, okay, really, what do we need? You know, what, what is the area of funding that we knew, need additional revenue streams that we don't have right now? You know, just kind of justifying it a little bit more for us to consider before we consider putting it out to the public.
Okay, I can, I'll work with Vanessa and Michael and maybe put it on the council time agenda. I do want to note, because Vanessa is going to be on vacation for a couple of weeks. And so even with the safe park location, what I would like to do is have everything come at once. So, you know, we have the pros and cons, I would like to have her be part of that discussion. If council wants to do your site visits, all that. So I can have that, I was looking, I put on here for March 22nd because she'll be back, I think, on the 20th from her vacation. And I think she's leaving next week. So I'll talk to her this week and see if either her and Michael or Michael can work with me while she's gone so that we can bring this back on the 22nd.
I have a question. Let's just say, are we talking about a sales tax or property tax? Or is that open? As opposed, as a seller's? Or what Vancouver did, was it property or sales?
My understanding, and Mark laid this out for us, and so we might want to get his chart back up. That, I mean, basically the city did something a little different and they said, here's the amount we need. And that changes over time as a property tax. So as the amount that's, it's kind of like our budget. You know, it gets, as the tax base increases, there's less of an impact for a property owner over years. It was a pretty hefty, they took a pretty good amount. So it was, I want to say 180 bucks, 300 bucks a year for your average home. So it was a property tax. But Mark had that information and the different variations that were available.
Yeah, and I think the, well, at least according to this chart here too, that the maximum that was approved, it would generate about $39 million for the county. But we will, I will get all that information.
Great, great. The other thought I had is how we collaborate with the small cities on, on this. How it might serve them, how it could impact them.
Yeah, and I think that opportunity, once we bring this back in March, we can bring it back to Echo. Because they, I think all the cities are represented on Echo as well and put it on that agenda to get feedback. And does that work councillor Mavagie?
I would just say, I got to go to some of those Echo meetings.
And they are on CBTV.
And so I'm a little unclear, but I'm fairly certain that the incorporated cities aren't impacted, just as we're not impacted by the city's property tax out in the country. I could be wrong about that, but so.
I think there are some interconnectivities between them. Because I know there's like a maximum levy amount. And I know that stuff that we do here can affect them in some way, I'm not sure exactly how it goes. But I would definitely piggyback on to councillor Marshall's statement is we really need to involve the small cities, you know, all the cities and get them on board and see how they're. And I think that there's a reputation in these things of, of them not really having much say. And many times in the funding that we receive in their behalf, they don't have the ability to, you know, take those funds themselves or they pass through to us. And I think there's that reputation out there that they don't get much say into how those funds are used.
Are you referring to document recording fees?
Yes, among other things.
And some of the cities are actually on the board of CAB who actually have that information monthly provided to them.
Yeah, so just addressing that, because, so one, Echo does have all the cities and they have been actively participating. They don't, they don't, they'll sit there, they'll hear about document recording fees and we presented them at Echo. They wouldn't even tell the rest of their city council what they heard. And as the chair, as the manager just said, they sit on the, on the committee themselves. And it's, we pointed them to the webpage where it's published, where it's all, all the accounting that's possible is available for them. So it's some, from my point of view, I've heard so much of this and it's a false narrative. I mean, they're, they're not, they just keep bringing it up without saying, hey, didn't you go to the Echo meeting? What did they say about the recording fees? And didn't, didn't Michael and Vanessa provide you a link to exactly where? I think it's a biannual report. It's, it's, I want to say it's at least reported twice a year.
And Mark Gasway has also sent it to all the cities multiple times. And sometimes within a week, I'll get the same question from another, from the same city that was just given the information. So yeah, there's, there's some sort of disconnect there. Okay, so I'll get all the information and send that to council. And then we'll have another discussion with this at the end of March. Any other?
Yes, before we move on, there was one question that I had. And I might be missing of it, there was some conversation that we had not too long ago that I was not quite sure that the outcome came out. But I remember being in a Vancouver city meeting where they voted on a sales tax increase for affordable housing. And I remember a large part of the discussion was that they actually couldn't, they couldn't collect those funds if the county had elected to take them themselves. And so from my understanding, unless things have changed, that is a funding structure for affordable housing that we've not opted into. And I was wondering if we can look into that.
I'm not sure which one you're referencing.
I'll, I'll look into it and get it, get it back to you guys.
Is it tied to the 1406 funding?
I don't recall, there was something passed through the state legislature that basically allowed, if I remember correctly, it's been a long time, but allowed us to take funds that was our, it wasn't actually, I don't think it was actually increasing the rate, it was allowing us to take a portion from the state.
That kind of sounds like 1406, but we did actually take those funds. We have funds coming in.
Maybe it was at a later, because I do remember that specific discussion taking place about the county not opting in. So I'll, I'll look into it myself and if I find something, I'll.
Yeah, if you just let me know what fund it is or tax or whatever.
Sure, yep, thank you.
Yeah, I have a text from Mark Gasway, 1406 funds, and we do, we did take that. But if you find something different, let me know, thanks. Any other questions before I move on to the next one? Okay, but I know the only thing I put on here is the next meeting date, but Amber will give an update on the homeless encampment policy.
Yeah, forward to me. We have our next internal meeting on March 7. We still have legal researches going on for the Boise ruling as well as the grants passed of what we can do in our, in our area. It's multifaceted, as we mentioned before, that risk, parks, Public Works, Legal, CCSO and our team are all working together to address this issue. And we will need to engage after this next meeting, council for the homeless and Vanessa and Michael and her team of what we are going to do with services and how that interconnects with the legal side of things. So we will be addressing that after we meet in March, but we'll have an update on the 15th for council.
What is the group that is doing this?
So it's the Homeless Impact Reduction Policy Team. So it's myself, Public Works, Parks, Risk, Safety, our legal team, CCSO.
And emergency management.
And emergency management. So it's a multifaceted team that's trying, and facilities, I missed facilities.
Wow, that's a lot of people. So it's a homeless impact.
Reduction policy.
Reduction policy.
Because we recognize it's not just about the encampments, it's about the security of our facility, it's about how we connect people with services, it's about how we, it's a multifaceted approach that we need to take. So we recognize that, this was a project that was started back in 2018, 2019?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
So we picked up the torch and we have, Lesley and her team have been great doing research for us for what we can do underneath the legal authority for the unlawful camping piece, not the other things that are happening on our campus. So we will be looking at all that and we should have a decent report available for council on this.
Interesting. How about the notification of existence of a camp somewhere in our property? Is that a part of the definition here of the cleanup policy that's being worked on?
Yes, so we have, so a couple of things underneath that. We have a notification piece that needs to take place and also belongings. So how do we, how long do we keep belongings? How do we catalog belongings? And that, and underneath the requirement of the statute and the case law that exists for this.
So I'm all about acronyms, I'm great glad you're doing that. HERP, is he, how do you pronounce it? But it reminded me.
I'm not going to put an acronym on there.
Well, I'll have to have you guys come to Echo and do a presentation, but it does remind me, because I heard, and I can't remember if it was from Camas or, one of, one of the cities had told me that they were talking to Washtetl. Do you have a Washtetl representative?
We do not yet.
Okay, so we had one and he was a premier member on Echo and he was complaining that he hadn't been invited to Echo. And we did notice that he hadn't been there for a while. So I don't know what happened to Washtetl on that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and look at the prior meetings and make sure that he gets on to the Echo meeting.
So when we started this, and I'm not going to call it by that acronym, now I need to rethink, we wanted to make sure we're not limiting it to encampments, but we will expand our group. It's a large group as the chair says now, but we want to make sure we have representation of facilities, has a different point of view and how they clean up and Parks does a lot of our cleanup down here when we have, when we have camps. So everyone has a stake in this, so we want to make sure we have all the right people at the table. And so we will expand where, where we need to to bring people in to get this going.
Is this one that the city also will have people there?
So eventually we will add the city. I mean, we have that with Echo, we, we, you know, have our joint pieces that come to the table for that. But as we talked about the safe stay location going in, you know, blocks from our campus, the sheriff and I will engage with how we have our MOU. We've been talking about that with legal too, as far as VPD covering campus, our sheriff's office covers our campus and how that intersects together. So we will eventually as well. I just don't want to duplicate our meetings and make sure that we have detailed information coming out. I know we all are saddled with a ton of meetings, so I want to make sure we're getting the information for our team and then we can always use Echo as the group to bring it together.
Okay, and kind of just back to the subject of Washtetl, the city already has some, some agreements with them, so.
Yes.
Working with them, so we find out who to talk to.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions on that one? Comp plan, we had that this morning, so I won't talk about that anymore. Wildfire issue, so I did put clarification, thank you councillor Mavigi. So I'll be working with legal to look at some code language, simple code language that just states that homeowners have the right to trim trees or bushes on their property to assist access of emergency responders and/or create fire breaks for safety. So it's, it's just about what homeowner's rights are and they're, it's not a regulation that they have to do it, it's if they want to do it, so the county will not incur any costs or responsibility ensuring compliance. So once I have that drafted and legal's reviewed, I'll bring it back to council first, that council time before we would take that to a hearing. Any questions on that?
So that would just be voluntary measures that a homeowner can take?
Yes. I don't have a lot of other, or on the second one, on ADUs, councillor Young, I think you had added this with Lindsay as a new priority.
Yes, I would say if we can just kind of, just park it and I would be willing to do some more, without Lindsay, it's kind of tough to get that, that help, but I want to just kind of keep it on there until I'm able to invest the time necessary into it and bring it up to council and see if they, see how they feel about some of the ideas that I have.
Okay, so there's no research or work or anything that other staff can do?
Probably not at this point, until I get my ideas better down on paper. Thank you.
Okay, Equestrian, so I am, I've already talked to April, and going through some old files and I'll probably have to look to councillor Mavigi and Chair Bowerman as well. This is about the Equestrian area, but we're just looking, reviewing all the prior communication decision points, code, excited to see if there's any outstanding items that we need to close the loop on or things that we need to address. Because I've heard a couple of things, I've heard we were doing something wrong with the code, the code didn't need to change, the people who are mad moved, you know, what the cases. And I don't know if councillor Mavigi, if you remember the solid ending point on Equestrian and if we were going to do anything moving forward. And I, like I said, we're going through all the documentation, so we'll find it, I just don't.
Haven't heard a word from, since we.
Yeah, it went quiet. I say that. I would just add a little bit, because I met with the Equestrian Executive Council last month and, and it is that some people move because of the enforcement, I believe, of the regulation and not being able to meet it or being too onerous. And that they, their sense was that it was not, there was really no final clarification on what needed to be met. So I think some review of that and getting that information out would, would be good.
Yeah, do that. And I'll, like I said, I'll have, we'll present to council first too, before we communicate that out. And actually, I missed earlier, the comp plan was not heard this morning. That was, we have a work, had a work session on February 22 and the public participation plan, the public hearing is scheduled for March 1st. The freight rail dependent use is what we heard this morning, so that's, we have our marching orders on that. The 2023 legislative session, I know council's actively engaged on those weekly discussions. Rural broadband, this is the Comcast contract, I had a great discussion with Comcast, they provided me a sample contract that they've used for ARPA funding and other counties in the state of Washington. I updated prior stuff and I sent to legal last week. My hope is that this will be on your agenda on March 21st for approval.
Of ARPA funding?
For the contract with Comcast that we are supporting with ARPA funding. This is going to expand broadband around battleground lake, so we can get that done. The Mental Health Advisory Board, the Budget Office is going to actually help facilitate these meetings probably starting this month. And so I'll be providing the new names to Emily and her team and we'll continue with that.
Whose office did you say?
Our Budget Office.
Okay.
Yeah, they're actively involved with the mental health sales tax.
So I hate to chime in, but it was a thought that I wanted to make sure I conveyed to Amber, because it was something that came up yesterday in the broadband meeting. So from time to time, we've allocated funds through ARPA, only to have them replaced by other federal funds. This is one project that's concrete, we know how, how long it is, how many hookups there are. This should be part of our submission to the state. And if we, we do get a grant as a result of it for Comcast, then we could repurpose that 406 million dollars that we allocated. It's just a thought, I mean, I'm not trying to complicate it, but it was a real project that we were able to partner with, we finally found a partner. And that's something that perhaps we could get a grant for.
And then the other items that I did, I do not have on here, but just for your information, so the light comment that came up from the constituents. So I did see a communication that April was having with constituents, I think they've only received a few complaints. But what I asked her to do was get the number of complaints, what are they, look at other jurisdiction codes, and then she's going to bring that to council to see what you want to do, if you want to look at putting something in the code with regards to light in the rural areas. And she's also working on the 300, the 500 buffer on the communication, you know, it will have a cost to it just because there's more people, but she's reviewing all that as well and we'll get that front of council for direction on there.
One item, are we, are you finished with that? Okay, one thing that I didn't, maybe I somehow missed it, but when we were talking about Heritage Farm, I know we had a discussion about deed restriction to ag land, is that still being worked on?
That was a Leslie issue, I believe.
Yes.
I think that that was only like last week or two weeks ago that I think we had a discussion and.
It was originally brought up prior to this year from councillor Mavigi and actually a constituent and then rediscussed last.
Okay, so is that moving, are we working on that?
It is being worked on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one additional thing that I think may be being worked on, and that was the notion of a ag land commission or seeing where we left off with that recommendations from 2008 and kind of knowing that we're going into comprehensive planning and that could be a helpful tool.
Yes, and I will also just share the initial conversations with new leadership with LULAC. Does appear that they're interested in continuing with the farm and I will update council as I get more information.
Oh, I'm sorry, policy issues, we're done, right? So we have no executive sessions? I do believe that this meeting is adjourned, thanks to all of you. It is 12:54, so you've done well, thank you.